And to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his evil with liberty and justice for all.
Rolt.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Ray. Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Former president.
Correspondence?
We have a liquor notice, standard liquor notice, for 240 Wickham Avenue.
Received and filed.
That's it this evening.
Okay, for the good of the city, may we like to come up? Mayor?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to go out of order a little bit. I want to once again welcome our superintendent of schools, Amy Creedon, and her staff, and to welcome them here to our city hall once again for the second year in a row as they prepare to present the budget, the school district's budget, for the upcoming academic year. Some of us in our community would think that probably the most important vote that we cast all year long may be for the school board budget. And the, or the school budget, not the school board budget, but the school budget. Because that affects a lot of things in our community, some of them that I touched on in my State of the City. We appreciate all the hard work that went into it and the dedication. Superintendent Creedon, that your team had put into developing a budget that will once again support our students and ensure they receive a high-quality education. Middletown is known for that. I understand that creating a budget, as we all do here in the city, is a very complex process. We know what goes into it. It involves many difficult decisions, and it is a blueprint of how we think as a community and how the school board prioritizes what they believe is important for our students in our city. I want to assure the school board once again that, that one, we thank this transparency. We thank this opportunity for you to speak not only to us, but to the, to the public through Channel 20, to ensure then that we're committed to supporting the schools and working with the schools. Once again, at least I am, and I know, I believe you all are, with a, have a positive result in the budget vote, once people are able to examine the gives and takes in the budget and what they have prioritized as being important for our community. I'm looking forward to the public hearing tonight, the presentation, learning more about how the district plans to allocate its resources. I think you'll be impressed. I'm confident that the leadership of the school district and our schools will continue to thrive under that leadership with the best possible education for our students. As I mentioned, I presented in the State of the City, the, the address that we're all proud of the accomplishments of the school district, and that we need to really talk about the accomplishments of this district more and more, because that is only good for us and our community, our city, our property values, and our students and our kids. So, thank you for your dedication, Mrs. Creedon, Superintendent Creedon. Thank you again, once again, to your staff, and I look forward to working with you to achieve the goals. And now I would ask her up to the podium to make the appropriate presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for such a lovely introduction to set the stage for the presentation tonight. Thank you, President Rodriguez, and the city council, for the invitation to be here tonight, to be amongst colleagues, information share with you and our broader school community in another forum. It feels really good to be standing here, a second year, to present this incredible budget to you and to our Middletown schools community. Before I dig into the budget, I just want to take a minute and recognize members of our cabinet team who came here tonight to let you know that just with any work that you do inside the city, there are many hands that are part of creating the budget that we present to our school community. And so with me here tonight is my assistant superintendent, Michael Tuttle.
Hello.
Jillian Crawford, who is our Director of Personnel and Inclusivity. Nicole Tagney, who is our Director of Special Education. And Linda Bratt, who is the Director of ENL Bilingual and World Languages. So, one of our big focuses this year was on making sure that, just like with every year, we stay true to our mission statement, the direction that the Board of Education gives us to make sure that we're making fiscally sound decisions that are always scholar-focused. Yeah, thank you. We heard our community loud and clear last year. We had made really incredible efforts to communicate with the school community in different ways. We set out with an earlier budget development calendar and included the community with us along the entire length of the process. And we heard from our community at the end of the budget cycle last year that that still wasn't enough. And so, we came to it, really digging into the budget development process, almost right after the budget development process from the year prior had concluded. So, the community comes out, votes on the budget, and it's not too much more time before we dig in and start to be, and think about the budget for the coming year. What that included this year was an opportunity to intersect the budget development process with our strategic planning process. I came and talked about our strategic planning and talked about all of the efforts, the different faces, voices, and lenses that we were using to develop the roadmap that the school district would use over the next five years. And so, when we sat down at the budget table, we included many of those voices in our conversations as well. So, you can see here, just on the slide, that, you know, we had, the strategic planning committees were budget-focused. We heard from our educators and our staff, listened to our financial advisors, really brought in the PTO cabinet teams, the departments, the schools, our fair funding committee, elected officials, the audit committee, administration, the Board of Education, and our community partners in places like the YMCA, Parks and Recreation, the Orange County Department of Mental Health, the Middletown Police Department, the Town of Wallkill, the Town of Wallkill Police Department. All of those voices had opportunities at various moments in time to share with us what their priorities were, so we knew the direction we would need to take in the district. So, what I want to talk about are just some of the considerations that we were focused on as we developed the actual number that we wound up with. The addition of a Director of Technology across the district. A restructuring to align to state education requirements inside our special education program and our growing capacity there with the addition of two special education case managers. Changing our programming and aligning a bit across campuses, so families don't have to make difficult decisions in terms of program placement. So, we're adding eight special education educators. Growing program enrollment at Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon. So, we're adding an additional music educator out there. Or actually, not an additional, a full-time music educator out there. Enrollment again, which that'll be a common theme that we talk about, and it's really such a credit to what's happening here in the city of Middletown and the Town of Wallkill. Middletown is one of the only districts that has a continual growing enrollment, something to be really proud of, but with growing enrollment is a growing need. So, we're adding a physical education teacher and a music teacher to Twin Towers Middle School, and a dual-language educator as we move our dual-language program up into the grade levels. At our College and Career Center, we are shifting from utilizing the services of civil service staff to moving into highly-qualified New York State certified counselors. So, that is an investment that we are making into the College and Career Center. We are not looking to minimize the impact of that incredible resource for our school and school community, but we're looking to amplify the impact. We are adding for Part 154 compliance, one bilingual science teacher and one bilingual social studies teacher. And as a result of COVID, the New York State Education Department and the Department of Health has sort of shifted some of the requirements that we need to meet in terms of air quality. And so, because of that, we are in need of an HVAC technician and an HVAC foreman.
Good, hi, good evening, and thank you for having us. As Ms. Creedon said, this effort begins as soon as the vote is done and approved. We're already planning for next year, and then the year's on, and we continue to do that as we evolve. So, some other considerations we have this year for capital projects. One of the things that we've done is we're able to feed every child every day. And based on that, and what we realized is we don't have enough refrigeration, enough cooling to keep all the food and the amount of food that we need to purchase in volume. So, over at the board office, we have the food service building, and we're looking to add additional refrigeration over there. The second thing you may have heard, over at Twin Towers, we're looking at a geothermal project. Actually, this Thursday, we're going to get approved. We finally got the contract to put in a geothermal unit, or system, if you will, over at the Twin Towers campus. That's kind of exciting. The reason why we started this is we applied for a grant, and we are one of the biggest recipients in the state, a $4 million grant from NYSERDA. So, this kind of catapulted us into doing this big endeavor. So, with that, though, comes some additional increased costs. So, we're looking for, to transfer some more money into the capital, about $8.1 million, to ensure that we have the whole geothermal system in place. So, what that does, that relieves us of fossil fuels and really protects us for the next 100 years for heating and cooling in that building. If you think about it, that building is 1942. It's one of our oldest buildings, the oldest building to retrofit, and now it's going to be one of our up-to-date and current systems, really in Orange County. There's no other school district in Orange County that has geothermal right now. So, we're kind of excited about that. And one of our capital outlay projects, that's a project you get every year through the state funding, and you can actually, it used to be $100,000. We're waiting for the final budget to be approved by the governor, and that should be up to $250,000. So, we're looking over at Truman Moon, creating a vestibule, and so we have the building a little bit more secure for folks that come into the building. And the staff there feel a little bit safer about how you enter the building. So, a little bit about foundation aid, you probably heard a little bit about that. Over the years, for the past 14, 15 years, there's been a battle up at the governor's office. We stayed ahead in schools, small-city schools especially. The past three years alone, you can see our deficit each year that we are, we are, back in 2020, '21, we were supposed to receive $126 million, and we only received $77 million. So, you can see our deficit was almost $50 million of aid owed to the community, okay? So, if we go back 15 years, it was about half a billion dollars that we were owed, if we added all the years up. But what you can see is that the deficit has decreased. So, we're at, this year, we're actually at zero. We're actually whole, based on the calculations that the state has provided, based on our community wealth, based on our needs, and all those things that go into the calculation. So, that's very exciting for us. That's why we're able to do so many things inside the district and really keep our tax base at the same level that we have. So, one of the things that we have to do is present a three-part budget. That's kind of, it's in your brochure that we just handed out. So, this year, we're proposing our administrative piece, a little bit over $28 million. Our program, which is our biggest cost, this includes benefits as well, but our program is where all of the schools, the staff, the educators, sports, transportation, a lot of other things happen, so that's almost $180 million. And our capital this year is $46 million point three. So, overall, we're looking at $253,659,540 budget, and that's almost about 11% increase over last year. So, when we look at our revenues, that's, you know, basically, you should start with our revenues, because the revenues dictate how we're going to create a budget, right? So, it's kind of a reverse system. So, our state aid this year, with all our new increase in foundation aid and everything, we're a little bit over $173 million. Other revenues that we have was interest. And the thing that we're really proud of this year is we're not using any of our reserves or any of our unappropriated fund balance. So, we're able to sustain what you'll see as a 0% increase in the tax levy, but not using our savings accounts, if you will, as our reserves, and we're not using any of our fund balance. So, we're kind of excited about that. So, our tax, local taxes, $72,404,150,000. That's the same number that we used last year as our tax levy. So, you'll see there's a 0% change there. So, when our revenues equal our expenditures, this is where we end up with our budget. It's $253,659,540. This, this number has grown exponentially based on our foundation aid, and we're able to sustain all the programming, everything that we want to do inside the district, the health and safety of our staff, our students, feed the students, transport the students, provide all these extracurricular activities, and really just, and as you saw, the staff that we're adding, because our enrollment keeps growing, and we have different needs, and we've seen a lot of different needs coming out of COVID. So, our proposed tax levy, you see, over the past three years, historically, in 2020, '21, it was a 1% increase. Now, if we go back to when COVID first hit, we were looking at a 20% reduction in our aid, right? There was a big panic going on, and then the federal government came in and gave us a stimulus package with the CARES Act. So, that's why we were able to keep it at 1%, or that would have been a really devastating year for us. The year after that, we had a zero, we stayed at the same. And last year was our really big number. We had a $5 million decrease in the tax levy, which every financial advisor cringes, because it's a slippery slope when you decrease something, because you don't know what the next few years will bring fiscally. So, this year, we're kind of excited to present a zero tax levy increase. The one thing that I just cautioned is that the equalization rates will determine your actual tax property bill. So, it's not, it hasn't fluctuated too bad lately, but that's the only thing that would cause a discrepancy in your last year's bill to this year's bill. Went too far. Okay, you want to do?
Yeah, sure. So, again, just, we wanted to make sure that we took this opportunity to share that we started with some formal community engagement back in December, and we've done a mix of in-person, we've done Q and As, virtual. We've tried to hit all of the different spaces and places that we thought our community would want to join us. And tonight, this presentation here to the city, and it'll be available on Channel 20. Tomorrow night, we'll be at the Town of Wallkill. We'll do our budget hearing Thursday night to the board and the community at our space at Middletown High School. And then, we will do a virtual coffee chat in the morning on May 10th. Be an opportunity for folks to jump on and ask questions after they've had plenty of time to really dig into the specifics of the budget. And so, next up for us, like I said, is the budget hearing that will take place on May 4th. And the budget election and Board of Education election is on Tuesday, May 16th. We want to just make sure that we call out that this year, we have shifted one voting location. So, just as a reminder, Super Tuesday, the date across the state where all school districts hold their annual election and budget vote is on May 16th. Our voting locations, we've always had three locations. Presidential Park Elementary School, so if you voted at Presidential Park last year, you'll vote again there this year. Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon, if you voted there last year, that's where you'll vote again this year, provided you haven't had a change in your voter registration. This year, Middletown High School, we heard the community last year. They talked about wanting in a location that had an easier entrance and exit, and they weren't competing with families that were dropping off and the traffic and the hustle and bustle of the Board of, of the high school location. So, we've shifted that location to the Board of Education offices. So, if you were a voter that went to Middletown High School, your new voting location is the Board of Education offices. Polls open on May 16th at 7:00 a.m., and they close at 9:00 p.m. And I put down there 326-1196, which is the number to the district clerk. If you have any question about when to vote, where to vote, and the time of voting, please email the district clerk. And then, don't forget that we have budget@ecsdm.org, which is a really easy email address to remember, budget@ecsdm.org. If you have any questions or thoughts that you want to share with us, that's an email address we've had open since just about the summer, and we've been kind of fielding questions there and supporting folks through that method. We want to thank you for giving us the time this evening. We really appreciate it and appreciate the partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Cave, anyone else who would like to address the council?
Good evening, Susan DePue, Prospect Street, Middletown. I'm here to give a report to the council and the, the city residents on our most recent cleanup day, which was held a week ago Saturday at the new location of our citywide cleanup. Instead of it being at Festival Park or John F. Degen Park, it is now, it was now at the new place, at the skate rink. And it was wonderful. It was very cold that day, but we had a good turnout. In 2011, while driving home from work one day, I had an encounter with my first experience of having litter thrown at me. As I was driving up the old post-garage hill, a car in front of me opened their windows and threw two slices of pizza at me. I beeped my horn, and they just kept on going. So, when I got home, I cleaned my windows, and I spoke to my husband, and I said, "I'm not going to live like this. Let's do something about people taking advantage of others, and let's clean up Middletown." So, a few days later, I made a little trip to see the mayor, and mayor was very receptive to help me. And the rest is history. We have had a cleanup every year except during the pandemic. With the support of the mayor and the council, we've grown in size, and we've grown in our efforts. I'd like to thank all the people who participated in our most recent cleanup day. It was a cold day, but it was held at our new skate park. It was really easy for our group to accommodate the people and to get them out where they wanted to go. We have some work to do on how to get it better, but I think it's a good venue for us. I'd like to thank all the participants who made this a success, starting with the people from the high school, the middle school, and the elementary schools, the teachers, the students, the athletes. We couldn't have done it without you, and we thank you. I'd like to thank the parents who brought their kids to show them what it's like to be part of this community. I'd like to thank the young children, who were really very much of an inspiration to most of us. As a grandparent, I thought it was wonderful to see grandmothers, grandfathers, parents showing their children and youngsters that it's a good thing to do to be part of the community. I'd like to thank the mayor for being always a success part of this endeavor. He's, he's really supported me from the very first time I entered the office and asked him if we could do something like this. And I'd like to thank the council and everybody who has supported this endeavor. We are making big progress, but we are not there yet. So, I'd like to thank all of you for being the support mechanism that drives me at 78 to still do this. And I'd like to say, "Let's keep Middletown clean." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council?
Good evening. Adrian Tumtrichan, 78 Highland Avenue. I'm here tonight to speak specifically about the traffic on Highland Avenue, specifically Cantrell Avenue and Highland. So, just a real quick background, that Cantrell is the street that separates YMCA from the Temple Sinai. As you're all familiar, no surprise, traffic is getting worse every place. But again, my concern is this specific area, and having lived at 78 Highland for over 20 years now, I've really witnessed the scenario there get worse and worse every year. So, I made a couple of simple drawings. I don't know if you guys can see it. The main concern here is, you know, the YMCA is up in this area here. 78 Highland, that's me right here. So, a couple scenarios. Number one, you know, I'm just going to put this right here instead of stumbling around. Perfect. The first scenario is cars leaving the YMCA after class. Usually, it's a big groups, you know, five, six, seven cars stacked up. They can't get onto Highland because there's traffic coming down, won't let them get on. So, they stumble in gradually. Not too bad. It gets worse when you have cars coming southbound on Highland Avenue trying to make a turn onto Cantrell. Cars coming behind them, don't see them, or not expecting them, slam on the brakes, come very close to rear-ending the cars, or worse, and this happens a lot, they veer around into the northbound lane and potentially are going to go into the, you know, oncoming traffic in that direction or whatever's happening in front of them. Another car pulling out of Cantrell, or pedestrians like myself crossing to go to YMCA. And the third scenario is just a little bit further, but cars that are just driving, you know, side by side, that section of Highland Avenue. So, I think really this comes down to, A, carelessness, but B, it's a wide-open road. People feel free to drive quickly, and, and they do. But really what brought me here is last week on the Sunday, the 23rd, there was an accident involving motorcycle and, and a sedan on the same location. And, let me just pull this out. I have... Excuse the graphics, it's just my simplistic version. I'm just going to explain it first, and just if anyone has questions, we can go to the graphic. But basically, it was Sunday night, it was quiet, the weather was fine. A car on Cantrell was trying to pull out to make a left turn to go northbound. Motorcycle traveling southbound, don't know what happened, but the two collided. So, the motorcycle rider was thrown at least 100 feet. I actually pasted off, she was quite literally, if I went at my front door, she was right in front of my front, in the street. Some people were there tending to her. I went up to see what had happened to the act by now, there were some police officers there and so forth. But what really caught me was the fact that, as the car from Cantrell was pulling out, if, if she had pulled out, and by the way, both drivers were females, no judgment, I'm just saying, just to be clear that both drivers were female. The car was not hit in the driver's side, it was hit in the right front. And the only way that could happen is that car had to be in a northbound lane already. And why was the motorcycle there? Clearly, well, in my opinion, clearly, the motorcycle was going around, trying to pass the car, misjudged, hit the front end of the car, and the rest is history. The motorcycle went, went into the bushes, and the, the driver, you know, thank goodness, you know, she was not a fatality, but, you know, it was frightening. So, you know, so what is, why am I here? What is my suggestion? I think this area is a little unique in that you've got the traffic from Temple Sinai and the traffic from the YMCA. So, my thought is you've got additional traffic, and then you've got drivers with, with the expectation of not stopping. So, I think there needs to be some mechanism, stop sign there. My thought is a three-way stop. There's already a stop sign on Cantrell, perhaps a stop sign on both Highland, southbound and northbound. I know that the city's tried some other methods to slow the traffic in this area. There's an electronic sign farther up the road. Not for nothing, but I think people know how fast they're going. They just, you know, and again, it's probably minority, but I don't think they really care. But I think also people are creatures of habit, and I think that they, they don't think they're doing anything wrong. I think they're just zipping down the road, and if somebody slows down, they just go around. And it's just very casual. So, just being, you know, an observer, I think that there needs to be something to kind of break that cycle, and I think a stop sign would be the simplest, most straightforward approach. So, this is just my two signs to the, to council, just letting you know as, as a resident, this is what I've witnessed. And, you know, again, I am concerned, in this instance, there were no fatalities, but my concern is that a driver, one of my neighbors, might get hurt very badly while, so. That's it. So, no other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else who would like to address the council? Moving on to remarks, the mayor?
Well, I'm glad to see the litter lady is back. Sue, she hasn't told a story about the pizza in a long time, and I know Jacob grumbles every time that, every time she tells a story, and tonight was no exception. But the way Sue ended it, where she used to say, "We need to clean up Middletown." Tonight, she ended her comments with, "Let's keep it clean." So, I think that's a change in attitude, and that's what we're trying to do with, with the cleanup day, is bring more awareness. The young people seem to be, at least when they were there, talking about saying things to their friends, about when they're walking home from school, throwing things in the yard, on somebody's yard. And, oh, just an impressive young bunch. You know, Mid-City has always been so cooperative, Dan Higby, and all the students, the organization... You know, Mid-City has always been so cooperative, Dan Higbee, and all the students, the organizations, the soccer club, the football team, as Sue mentioned. And Rick, you did a fine job for your first year organizing, and so we want to thank you for all your time, you know, that you put in on that project and will continue to do next year. And I know you and Sue will be meeting quite a bit to improve the coordination of the event. It really is, it's a great community event. I think the estimate was 500 people this year out in the neighborhoods, buses zipping around, so the only thing was, we didn't see Mr. Massey too much picking up garbage this year.
He was there bright and early.
He was there bright and early, but I didn't see him out picking out garbage. I was out doing my own neighborhood, Mr. Massey, but Mr. Twill saw me in my neighborhood. But other than that, it was a great, great event for us, and again, it's not just picking up the trash, it's trying to change people's images, our people's behaviors and trying to create a community, and that's what we are, a community. So, the gentleman just spoke about the traffic on Highland. You folks know where I stand on speeding and that we, and I know Mr. Twill and maybe others don't agree with me, but I am a supporter of a pilot project to do the raised intersections in certain parts of the city. One, of course, was at the Paramount Theater where we could, and we could do a pilot project of some sort. The other is a street that we looked at years ago, where different traffic calming methods on Highland, whether it was the budding out the intersections, narrowing certain parts, so the speed wasn't as, people would not speed as much as they can when they see that big runway of Highland Avenue. So there are solutions that are not just stop signs. Stop signs sometimes create more problems too, without having other traffic calming methods. So, the, I still think it's a good idea to do at least a pilot project and have certain criteria for high pedestrian areas like the Paramount in Highland and certain areas because of the width of Highland. If you recall, we did have a pedestrian death a few years ago at the intersection there by the Elks Club. It is such a wide boulevard with high speed, not every street, you know, if we establish the correct criteria, and I know the fear of the council and of others is that once we do one, every neighborhood's gonna want to have one. But if, you know, if you have a normal width street, maybe you don't qualify, but with the exception being a street like Highland. So, just my two cents again on it, and I'm willing to, as I said, try it, at least at the Paramount, and see how it works. And the other point on that is, is that there are, there is a downside to it too for the neighborhood, and I understand that. You know, the opponents of it will say it slows down emergency response vehicles, you know, and time is important when an ambulance or a fire truck or police car is responding, so you have to balance all that. And so it at least deserves another discussion, and I'm willing to have the discussion once again with you folks. There's tonight, you know, in my state of the city, I did mention that the Board of Estimates did make a recommendation on adding more police officers into our force. This past year, we did have a 15% increase in crime. I think a lot of it was the larceny and things of that nature. We're trying to get the crime suppression team, and the chief has put together, tonight there's a resolution in front of you tonight to fund the additional three positions, bringing us up to 75 sworn officers. So, I'm sure all of you will support it, but I want the public to know that we are reacting to that little spike in 2022, and that we're reacting in a way that, not to just have a visible police presence, but also a crime suppression unit that will help us with some of this criminal activity that's really impacting us in neighborhoods, you know, broke, you know, larcenies in cars. The public can be helpful also. If you start locking your cars at night, even in your driveway, that'll do, reduce it. I believe the state is coming out with some type of bail reform. The budget is anticipated to be voted on tomorrow. My understanding is that there is some significant movement on bail reform, which of course is gonna be helpful to us, at least in our experience, is because we had 95 or 93 people in 2022 that were arrested, I believe, five, three times or more, and one person was arrested 23 times. So the revolving door of petty crime, all of it being petty crime, or most of it being petty crime, is something that we're trying to stop on a local level. And I know there's a lot of opposition from the New York City area regarding making those changes in this type of criminal activity, but once it's not a, you know, it's not a big issue, but when someone's going out every day and doing these types of activities, they need to be addressed, and the judges need to have the discretion to set bail on these folks that are just harassing certain businesses in our community or neighborhoods by going into the cars. So, we'll see tomorrow what the final budget bill has, but my understanding is, is that there is gonna be some positive movement on bail reform regarding the discretion of the judges, where we can then make an appeal to the judge saying, "Mr. Massey was arrested three times for stealing a candy bar last week." And one time is not important, but two times is a concern, but maybe at some point, Mr. Massey can pay for his candy bar.
It was his candy bar.
He did, out of my office. So, that's what I have, and that's all I have in this. If you have any questions.
Any question for the mayor, Alman Johnson?
So with respect to the speed bumps, as you might remember, Mayor, I advocated for one in the third ward and was shot down summarily by the Commissioner of Public Works, but that's okay, I pulled a grudge on that.
Well, I remind you that you're the legislative body, not the Commissioner of Public Works.
Thank you. Maybe I'll keep that in mind for the future.
I hope so. And not speed bumps, I'm not talking about speed bumps. I'm talking about raised intersection.
Right.
Where it's a slight grade, it's at a controlled stop intersection, it's not in the middle of the road like a speed bump would be, you know, we're cautious about putting up speed bumps, because speed bumps in the middle of the road will create a lot of noise at night. I know some people have talked about the grid, I mean, the, like on the highway when you hit the shoulder of the road, the noise that will cause. So there's pluses and minuses to each thing, but I think from, as I said, the Paramount would be the perfect pilot project, because there's no residents around it, except a little bit at the corner over there, maybe one building with residents, and it does have a lot of, a lot of foot traffic coming in and out, and traffic does speed down South Street. So, that's where I would like to see it.
Well, I've become aware that some of these can be installed temporarily, so you wouldn't have to really think about the winter and snow removal and things, so.
Not what I'm talking about.
Doesn't necessarily have, so what you would do would be permanent?
Yeah, it's a, it's a raised, gradual raised area around the intersection or like in South Street area. So it's not a temporary fixture. It's more permanent.
I would support your advocacy of addressing it in some manner. You know, we've been talking about speeding, at least since the 10 years I've been sitting in this chair. I drive down Monhegan every morning between 7:30 and 8:00, and I would say at least once a month, after I pass the recycling area, somebody guns it to go around me, and I think they gun it, and not that they want to get there faster, I think they want to send an opinion to me that 30 miles an hour is not an appropriate speed limit. So, you know, how do you, you know, what are you gonna do?
Well, we're not gonna stop every person from speeding or going around, but there are, as I said, the important part's gonna be establishing criteria where these types of calming devices could be put in place, and it will be, you're gonna have a lot of input from a lot of neighborhoods. Eisenhower Drive is an absolute horror with the speeding on Eisenhower Drive. Andrew, I think your dad lives on Eisenhower, correct? He's one of the people that complaining about it, but I have a couple of friends that live on Eisenhower who are begging for it, some type of device to be put on there. But I don't know if that's the type of street that you want to have it on, because it's not, it doesn't have the width of Highland. So, we can bring people in to look at that and to make a presentation to the council and to the public, where we can come up with is the best plan and take baby steps with it, and do a pilot project. I think it's not a bad idea.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mayor. Remarks of the Department of Heads, Economic Development?
Good evening, everyone. This weekend, the Business Improvement District, we worked on a Cinco de Mayo weekend here in downtown, and looking forward to three days of merchants and restaurants having their own specials and creating the atmosphere for people to come down and enjoy what they have to offer. And the bid, as a promo, we're gonna be doing social media and so forth, and we're gonna have some entertainment throughout the weekend. For instance, Friday night on Cinco de Mayo, we're gonna have strolling mariachis throughout the downtown area. Then we're gonna have, in Runford Downtown Park, we're gonna have some folk dancers. At Degnan Square on Saturday, again, more folk dancers will be part of the event. Thrall Library joined in, they're gonna have a Storytime and Craft couple hours from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So everybody's doing their own thing, we're promoting, tagging on our social media or website. I want to thank a few people. Juan from Taco Factory and Jose from Alondra's, they helped put together this small committee through the bid. Cheryl from SubQ Tattoo, and then Rick, Leonora, Stephanie, John Numchuk, Eileen, Joseph. Indira helped us translate material. So everybody came together and helped to put this great event together, just everybody come down and just see what we have to offer downtown. Also, our summer concerts begin, the Thursday nights on June 1st, June 2nd, the Friday nights. We have our Juneteenth celebration back on June 19th, the Monday. It's gonna be held at John Degnan Square and a movie screening, a free movie screening at the Paramount. Farmer's Market returns June 3rd, and our Paramount is recital and graduation season is coming up. We have Toro, Fatien, SUNY Orange has a convocation ceremony, so all those good things are happening next couple of months. And now let me go to CDBG, which our action plan, I'd look for your support tonight, our action plan has to be sent in and approved to HUD, so I'm asking for your support, for the mayor to sign off, and for us to be able to submit to HUD so we could get our annual funding for next year. And that's all I have.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. Start of Alderman Massey, I know you had a lot of rain, the council president urged me not to report on the reservoir level, because we had a few inches. In the last couple of days, we had about two inches, before that, the entire month, we had five, almost six inches. So our reservoir are full, there is one reservoir where, on purpose, we're trying to keep it low because of the dams project that we are reconstructing, and that is Shuangang Dam. Right now, it's down by 12 inches, but otherwise, it would have been flowing if we were feeding it with water. Citywide cleanup, a great job to Sue and Rick and everybody that participated. Middletown is clean, and we're gonna keep it clean. I mean, it's the community effort that everybody comes out and shares, you know, the feeling for the community, and that's tremendous, you know, versus the amount of litter that they pick up. So it's a great effort, I'm happy to be part of it. DPW is very happy to be part of it and to continue to participate in it. Downtown project and the traffic operation project, the $30 million project, it's moving along, as you will see that, if you notice around the city, milling and paving has just started. We just did Ridge Street, and we're doing some of the side roads leading into the intersections. The intersections are not done yet, because the traffic lights will have to be, the new traffic lights will have to be installed there before we do the actual intersection. But the roads leading into the intersection, where the gradient curve has been done, it's been milled and repaved. Part of that, if you drive through downtown, you'll notice that there are no trees. Trees were there, and then they disappeared during the construction. We wanted the contractor to put them in, but it was a huge amount of money. Alderman Paul Johnson, he did get us in touch with Cornell Cooperative, and they sent a consultant in. Based on that and other study that we have done, we selected the type of trees that will fit in downtown, business, downtown environment. So we purchased the trees under a grant from NACERTA, because Middletown has been designated as a clean energy community because of all the LED lights that we have done, all the improvement we've done for the HVAC throughout city-owned buildings and city streets and so on and so forth, and the education that we have participated with and we were part of. Because of that, they designated Middletown as a clean energy community, so NACERTA, they gave us $5,000. We used some of that money to purchase the trees. Hopefully, we'll be installing the trees by the end of this week, early next week. So we will get in touch with that gentleman and to see if he wants to come in, to make sure that we're doing it the proper way. We're gonna have engineered soil shipped in, we're gonna be buying it to install them and so on. So Brian Smith will be leading the effort from DPW. It's gonna be done by DPW, but we want that gentleman to come in and give us, you know, some hints or whatever he's concerned about when planting the trees. So, recycling, again, please follow the pamphlet and the information that we have on our website. If you have any questions, call us at DPW, we'll be happy to send the pamphlet for recyclables, what's acceptable, what is not. We've been sending letters, we've been sending letters, warning people, and says, "This is your last chance." So, pretty soon, the code is gonna be modified, so we'll be able to impose issue violations, and then the judge, you'll have to come before the judge, and there's gonna be some fines. Again, we've been saying that for months, we don't want to do that. We want the whole public, everybody, just to help us out. Otherwise, our recyclables will be rejected. We're spending a lot of time to weed out the garbage from the acceptable recycling in our own transfer station. So, I'm sorry I keep repeating myself as a broken record, the people who are complying, they're tired of hearing me about it, but there's quite a few people who are not complying, and we urge you to comply. With the spring cleanup, third ward, which has happened to be the third ward to be cleaned, we'll be done with it tomorrow, hopefully, and which is great, we usually will stay cleaning up until Thursday. It takes over all of our time. We use many people from the street department, some from sanitation, and some from the water department as well to do the citywide cleanup, ward by ward. So that will be done tomorrow, and then next week, we will be doing the second ward, and that will be, that will be done with the city. And then electronic drop-off, I believe it's May 21st, but it's on our website, the exact date, it's on Saturday. You have to bring your electronics over to DPW Garage on Monhegan Avenue. With that, I will conclude my remarks. If you have any questions for me?
Any question for Jacob? Alman Tobin?
I was actually cleaning up over near Rita's and the Key Bank for the citywide cleanup. Is there plans to put a sidewalk by Rita's there, or, I mean, several people walked by me.
Yes, yes.
Which side?
It's gonna be, I have to look exactly at the plans, because I haven't looked at them for a while. Not across the railroad tracks, because we don't want to get involved with the railroad track and permitting, but we want to shift everybody on the other side by Key, across from Key Bank. So there isn't gonna be by that steep and by playtogs and all that stuff, there's not gonna be a sidewalk in there.
Will there be a crossing across the ShopRite or?
Yes, it's all gonna be pedestrian crossing, both ShopRite and Rite Aid, and you're gonna have ADA accessible ramps, and it's gonna, you're gonna have pedestrian crossing, the flashing lights and the beeping noise, and the counter and everything, it's gonna be state-of-the-art LED intersections. And that's throughout the city, all the city signalized intersection, part of this project, they'll be upgraded with the LED lights and the pedestrian crossing and ADA accessible, and painted crosswalks and so on.
I just want to say thank you too for the folks in Armchair that faced the flooding. I know you cleaned out, been cleaning out the railroad tracks, even though it's not part of the city's property, and so, you know, I got emails, they appreciate that, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob. Police Chief.
Good evening. Just to address the gentleman on Highland Avenue, his concerns, they're valid concerns. We deal with that all the time, it's one of the highest volume areas of the city. To help with that discussion and come up with a plan moving forward, what I'll do is I'll use some of our historic... is I'll use some of our historical data from the speed trailer, UTT issuance, and MBAs in and around Highland Avenue. So I'll get that to you as soon as I can so that I could help with the discussion and hopefully come up with some type of direction for us. Speeding, it's not just an issue here in the city, it's something that is being dealt with across our county, into the state. I sit on the traffic safety board for the county. It is a common topic of discussion, not just in the local communities, but more in a broader band as well. Maybe in committee, I could share some of the details of what we're seeing across the county to get a better understanding of that. What we're doing here locally to help combat some of that is I've put a dedicated traffic unit together that we rotate around. Right now, I have Officer Caesar Ortiz, and his first week there, he wrote over 100 summonses for a variation of different violations. And basically, I am directing him on your input and community input. So it's very hard to have him everywhere, but we are trying to make an impact and have some type of resolution or enforcement efforts there. Because, and really, the reality of it is that's the best solution, is the enforcement, I feel, to have some type of response to that poor behavior. In regards to the bail reform that the mayor mentioned also, this last past Friday, I, along with some of my colleagues from other departments, met with Senator Scoofus to have this discussion. He holds these roundtables every so often to discuss situations that are impacting the local law enforcement and how he could support us. And in that discussion, we spoke about those petty offenses that seem to be driving our crime, quality of life issues, and talked about maybe looking at some alternative measures instead of just looking at the arrest aspects of it and bringing those people before the courts, but maybe embedding some other type of resources into those arrest situations to maybe provide some type of reformative efforts. So he liked the idea. It was a collective idea amongst many police chiefs in that room that day, and we're hoping we'll get some movement on that in the near future. In regards to the resolution before you this evening for the new police officers, I would greatly appreciate your support in that. Three patrol officers, there would be three more boots on the street, officers that will be out there answering calls, helping with traffic enforcement, serving our community, helping improve our quality of life. So greatly appreciate any support there, and I'm sure that you will appreciate the return on that as well. I have nothing else this evening, unless you have anything for me.
Any question for Police Chief Alderman Kleiner?
Yes, Chief, would you just go over very quickly the numbers on our police officers? Because you've said previously and at the Police Commission, what we used to be and how our numbers have gone down, and things like five school resource officers, and where we really need the additional officers.
Yeah, I would appreciate, just to comment on that. So we, our highest point in the Middletown Police Department was 77 sworn personnel, and that's from myself down to the most junior person. That includes our detectives, our sergeants, our lieutenants. Due to, you know, various reasons, we went down below that for some period of time, and we've been building backup for over the last several years. Last year, we added one additional police officer to the ranks to bring us from 71 to 72. With these additions, if they pass this evening, it'll bring us to 75. But some of the things that have happened in the meantime is now we do provide the school with five school resource officers. When the school resource officer program was in place previously, we applied to three. So we have two additional people with less staff to pull from. I think the school resource officer program is an asset to the police department, the community, the school as a whole. That I don't think is just an issue at all. I'm just using it as an example to show that our numbers have come down somewhat with our staffing, and we're using our resources to help augment other things and provide resources to other programs.
And we added another one to the high school.
Well, five altogether with the second. And the commission, my commission as well as the council, was supportive in allowing us to backfill that position when we added that fifth SRO last year, so I greatly appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have nothing to report. Any questions?
Sure. No questions, thank you. City Clerk?
Good evening. Good evening. I just would be remiss if I didn't also comment this evening on the cleanup. It was a great event this year. Thank you to Ray Lynn and her department for all their help. We certainly couldn't have done it without them. And Mr. Twill and his folks supplying all the resources, the bags, the pickers, the rakes, and Maria helped out with t-shirts this year. So it really was a citywide event, and, but, you know, nobody really thanks Sue, and without Sue and her vision and her drive to do it all, it would certainly not be what it is. So thank you, Sue, for being the champion of the community for the event. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Any question for Rick? All right. Public hearings in grievances?
Good evening. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, on or as near to 7:30 p.m. as possible in the common council chambers, second floor at 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a proposed zoning amendment to create a new section 475-28A, Article 6, general regulations to read as follows. Cannabis sales, the sale of cannabis, cannabinoids, cannabinoid hemp, cannabis flower, cannabis products, cannabis-infused products, hemp and hemp extract, as those determined by Section 3 of the New York Cannabis Law, is prohibited in and on all private and public property in every zoning district in the city of Middletown. The complete proposed zoning amendment is available in the office of the common council clerk, 16 James Street here at City Hall, and on the city website. Anybody wishing to be heard on the issue will be given an opportunity to speak this evening. Any person unable to participate at the time of the public hearing can email comments and submit in advance to rmcormick@middletown-ny.com by order of the common council.
At this time, the public hearing is not open. Anyone from the public? Any council member? I have a motion closed. So Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings closed. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I want to thank Ms. Creed and her staff for the budget presentation, and I hope everyone will go out and vote on the 16th and vote positive. Vote yes on the budget, please. And Sue, great job again this year with the cleanup, and thanks to Rick and everyone who helped that day. It was a, and including the mayor, who showed up. But it was a good time, a good day, did a lot of cleanup, and I agree that it's nice that all the people get involved, all the people from the school district, that they do something for the community. So thank everyone.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. A couple of things. Our first ward meeting is next Wednesday, May 10th, from 5:30 to 6:30 here. We love to see you. Rick, thank you very much for being an absolute joy to deal with in terms of getting the school and the kids and the community and the members and the staff coordinated. Everybody said it was, you know, really a nice, I think it was a good move, moving it to the Erie Way Park from Degnan Square. It was a real nice job. Sue, thank you, as always, for your work on that. Sort of off the cuff here a little bit, I mean, I would definitely support a, some sort of pilot program at the Paramount for raising the roads a little bit. I mean, we talked about doing this a few years ago, so I would be in favor of that. Of course, I'm sure there'll be more discussion, but thank you very much.
Alderman Gray?
Excuse me, thank you very much. Yeah, first off, thank you to Mr. Tim Trisham for coming and bringing your, you know, concerns to our attention. It does reopen a conversation that, I know the mayor, you mentioned Eisenhower, but we've had so many streets, and we've had this conversation over and over. I fully support taking some action, so, you know, let's get that into a committee that needs to be, and let's have this discussion and see what we can do with it. I do want to thank the school board for, or, excuse me, the superintendent for being here and all the staff. You know, it is, we have such an incredible asset in our school district here, and from our facilities and our programs, far exceeding some colleges I've seen in my life, that we're very fortunate. So, you know, definitely to see a 0% tax levy again is just phenomenal for us. We will be having our second ward constituents meeting on Monday, the 8th, at 7:00 p.m., right here at the council chambers, so we hope to see you then. And then you can definitely tell, spring and summer are, you know, here and around the corner, because there's just been so many events going on. Sue and Rick, the cleanup was awesome, as usual. You know, just cleaning up around where I was, it was incredible to see people who didn't even know about it, see people taking action, and they stopped and joined in. So, you know, the more visible that the groups are out there, the more we get people involved in cleaning up, so that's an awesome thing. We did host downtown here was the county crime victims memorial and vigil. For anyone that was there, it was definitely a very moving and humbling event, so I want to thank everyone who was involved in that. You know, and also, I had the privilege, along, I know, the mayor, Rick, and Maria, and Mary Zahoreczek, were at the Women's University Club dinner and gala on Saturday night. They were celebrating their 100th anniversary, even though it is their 103rd, but we all know what happened over the last few years. But big thing was that they were awarding the Evelyn Isaac's Award for the first time ever, and that was given to someone we all know here definitely, and I believe probably many of the people listening and watching know, our friend Maria Ingracia received the inaugural award just for all she's done for the Women's University Club, and, you know, just want to congratulate her publicly here again. And just a reminder to everyone, yes, you may see that our third ward streets that we but against had their stuff out, but please don't go ahead and, you know, put your stuff out on the curb now. You're supposed to put it out this coming Sunday night in the second ward, and the city will come around and clean it up and pick it up over the few days following. But again, please don't put it out on the curb now, especially electronics, regardless of the date you put them out. But please, let's keep our sidewalks and our streets cleaner for a few more days. I know it's, you're getting Nancy to get it out there, so am I, you know, so we'll get it all done soon. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. The citywide cleanup, it's a great community event, and I want to particularly thank Ray Lynn and Parks and Rec and Kelly, and because they do a lot and they keep our supplies, and Rick did an amazing job this year. So I think the moving it to the pavilion in Erie Way Park, it's just sort of a natural setup, and so it's a great event. And Maria, thank you for Cinco de Mayo. That sounds like it's going to be fun downtown this weekend. Hope to take advantage of that. I just want to mention, because I keep hearing people talking about it, the citywide yard sale, and that's another, we can thank our city clerk, Rick, for that. That's at the beginning of June, but you don't have to be signed up to do a yard sale, but if you do sign up, then you will be on the list. Have I got that right, Rick?
That's correct.
Okay. So either way, but, you know, sign up and get on the list, or just do a pop-up yard sale, but for that weekend only. Our next meeting is May 16th. That is the date of the school vote, so we won't get to remind you again, so by the time we have our meeting at 7:30, you'll have a half an hour left to vote. It won't be long, so please try and write that down. There are quite a few candidates for school boards, so familiarize yourself with them and join in that vote, too. Paramount, we did vote, I think back when I think I was chair of the Public Works Committee at the time, but I know we did vote to go ahead and try a slightly raised sidewalk going, leading to the Paramount, but the council can only vote to do it, but then we don't have people we can get to say when we'll do it, and we don't have the contractors and such, so it has...
How to fund it?
Well, we were willing to fund it, too, but we didn't, we can't come up with the actual proposal on materials and stuff to fund it, so we need, we need help that way, but I'm sure the council would be willing to do that. It seems like a good idea, and we really should try it out. And my last thing is on feral cats. We do have some regulars. I know at once upon a time, we were going to make it illegal to feed feral cats. That doesn't keep your feral cat population healthy. It doesn't really help. CNR, catch, neuter, and release is a good idea to keep the population down, but other than Tara, there aren't many options for doing it. The city doesn't really offer vouchers. I'd really like to see us have that discussion on what we can do. I know we cleaned out the population from downtown, but that area where they were taken now is full, and taking care of those cats is a full-time job. So we need to figure out exactly what's going on and what we can do about it, so I hope we can have that discussion. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Feral cats. So the city does provide funding. I work with Robin, unfortunately, no, fortunately for me, almost every day, and we are compensated for cats that are spayed. The city does compensate her per cat. We have more than 100 cats at the sanctuary, and basically one person who's feeding them, taking care of them, cleaning up after them. So Robin Stewart is a one-woman band and deserves a lot of credit. Will we be done with the cats? As soon as we're done with speeding, will we be done with the cats? That's about, that's about where I think that's going to happen. Trees. I've tried to think more about trees lately for reasons I won't go into. I did forward to you maybe two months ago, I attended a DEC webinar called "The Cost of Not Planting Trees," and I planted the seed about thinking about trees. Anybody who would like to chat about that over a cup of coffee? Coffee's on me. I did notice that at 33 Fulton, they've done quite a significant planting around that building, so I think that's a good step. As far as Cornell Cooperative, Eric Scholenberg is his name. I worked with him for the six years I was at Cornell. He's a natural resources major, he's a forestry miner, he's a wealth of knowledge, and he's more than willing to help us out. So I'm sure when you let him know that you're ready to do the planting, that he'll be ready to provide some information about that. I also attended Mohawk Consultations, had a global day this past Sunday called Healing the Earth, and the presenters were a guy who's done environmental law for 50 years and also a member of Lenape Indian Trial Tribe, and it was a little bit crunchy for my particular background, but I did find it to be very, very educational, and there's a lot to think about, particularly as a sidebar on indigenous populations in this country. Lastly, would I be able to ask Mr. Tuttle a question? Would that be not permissible?
Go ahead.
I got permission.
If you can answer it.
Oh, you don't have to answer, though. It might be rhetorical question. I, you know, I was at the meeting where you did the geothermal, and I saw the board members kick the tires on that. So 8.1, that's about 10% of the project as it was presented. Now, was geothermal in the project?
No.
So it is an add-on, and you're doing the 4 million in the capital reserve?
Yeah. So originally, I can come to the microphone.
Well, if you want people to hear, you have to come to the microphone.
Yeah, I know. Try to be loud. So originally, when we first started with the Twin, I'll go back a little bit, when we first started with Twin Towers, it was, when COVID hit, we needed air conditioning and HVAC in the building. So then, as we got going, it morphed into, we got some aid from the federal government, so we said, okay, let's put an addition on, let's do the whole building and revitalize the whole building, right? So the 83 million was some of, part of roofing over at Truman Moon, so really, it's about 879 million for Twin Towers.
I see.
So during the project and development, they decided to look at, the geothermal opportunity came. So that means we then, that transferred into looking at different piping, different insulation, putting all the wellfields in there. Even though we got the 4 million, it was just a revitalization of the whole building using geothermal, right? So it's a self-contained, so all the piping needs to go to all of the hole inside. So it was a little bit different design than what was originally voted on. So that's why we're looking for some additional funding.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the answer. And lastly, there'll be a candidate's night next Tuesday at the high school. I believe it'll be on 20, live. Is that correct?
Mini TV.
Yes?
Mini TV.
I'm sorry, force of habit, on mini TV. And so I call your attention to that. It'll be from 7 to 9, and you'll get to hear candidates answer questions. Thanks.
Alderman John Francois?
Yes, good evening. Citywide cleanup has been a success this year. It seems like it's getting bigger and bigger every year. I'd like to thank everyone that was involved with that. It's a great thing to see the community come out and try to keep Middletown clean, and I really appreciate that. I want to send a shout-out to DPW, the sanitation department and the street department. These guys did an excellent job this year with the bulk annual pickup. We began up Sunday night, you know, drove around usually just to see how much stuff people put out. It was amazing. It was a lot of stuff out there. I'm thinking, wow, this probably is going to take us weeks to pick up all these stuffs. So that afternoon, I came home around... I came home around 4 o'clock. Most of the stuff was gone. I mean, it's incredible. These guys work hard throughout the day, and I appreciate the commissioner for your department doing an excellent job. And also this side, Espira and I have a committee meeting in this chamber at 10 o'clock. Please come and join us. Thank you.
Aldman Tobin?
Thanks for the presentation. I enjoyed it. I love this flyer and all the things that we're doing for our community. My kids, I can't, as a teacher, I love all the opportunities that are available for students or scholars in Middletown, and a 0% tax levy is amazing. I'm glad the state is finally fully funding foundation aid, so that's a credit to our elected officials. Susan, I'd like to thank you for the cleanup. It gets bigger and better every year, which is also a thank you to the school district, because I'd say a majority of the people there are students, and they're learning about, you know, taking care of the environment, taking care of the pride in our community. So it's greatly appreciated. I agree with the mayor. I'm not really in favor of speed bumps, but there's all kinds of different speed teaming things you can do to kind of like narrow the roads, or different ways to slow down traffic without putting in those speed bumps. So I'm interested in that, and I think we have a lot of narrow streets. I mean, Highland Avenue is kind of the exception, but so, but do people do complain about speeding and the stoplights, which is also an enforcement issue statewide? I know I take 17 and 84 in the morning, and it's like the autobahn. I mean, unless you're going like 85 in the left lane, people are traffic pulling over, passing you on the on-ramps. I mean, it's nuts in the morning. Really, it's really dangerous. And then I like the crime suppression unit. I think that's a good idea. We want to fight any kind of crime and also, you know, to get out in the community. And I love Chief Amantu's approach. I think it's been really partnership with the community and well-received, so I think that will help us tremendously. And finally, Maria, thank you for the, putting together Cinco de Mayo, celebrating our Mexican culture. We have all kinds of Mexican restaurants and a lot of pride in our Mexican culture. So I'm glad that we have added that event to our, you know, very packed social calendar. So we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Lastly, I want to thank the school district for coming. Great presentation. Zero tax percent is great for us and everyone. I'm going to add to DPW committee, the Highland Avenue project wants more speed bumps, raised bumps, raised, whatever you want to call them. Yes, we need them. Yes, we need them at the Paramount. Yes, we need them on Highland Avenue. I do not need an engineer firm to come and give us another request, proposals, traffic studies, survey monkeys. We don't need that. The public is here. The police chief will tell us exactly how many accidents we get, how many speeding tickets they get. So we have the issue. We've been speaking for years. We have this thing called CHIPS money that we, as a board, say to Jacob, will you approve all these streets to pave and everything? We, as a board, can put a resolution together and say we want to raise beds or whatever you want to call them, and do it at this location. We could do it at Highland, and we could do it on South Street. So again, I'm going to add it to the committee. I don't want engineers and vendors to tell us to sell us all these flashing lights. I see people, when they see the flashing lights, they want to see where it stops telling them how fast they're going, and they're doing, and it goes back and forth. I see it all the time on Highland Avenue and everywhere else. It needs to happen. If you go to, I go to Bass Pro Shop in Connecticut, sometimes Waze takes me off the road, off the highway. Every road in Connecticut has a 10-foot speed bump in Connecticut, and they get snow just like we get snow. They have ambulance, they have police, they have fire trucks, they have everything. So other towns, Rockland, Stony Point down there, they have speed bumps. So other towns have it. It's not, we're not inventing speed bumps. They have it, other cities have it, and either speed cameras, where they get the ticket. I'm for it for the speed ticket. Give them the ticket, do something. We need to pass something. I'll put it in committee. I'll ask the DPW chairman, please bring it up. Come up, and let's pass something. New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey accepting a $3,500 grant from Walmart to support Kids' Day Out and the Night Out Against Crime events.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Witt. Any discussion?
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner authorizing the Stewart Military Appreciation Picnic to use the mobile stage.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner authorizing the Stewart Military Appreciation Picnic to use the mobile stage.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green accepting a $250 donation from Capital Market Advisors for the citywide cleanup event.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green, seconded by Aldman Witt. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson authorizing the submission of the 2023 CDGB Action Plan.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Tobin. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson accepting a $250 donation from the Middletown Lions Club for the fishing derby.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean Francois accepting a $1,900 donation from the enlarged city school district of Middletown for the summer bookmobile.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean Francois, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner establishing a budget for the hiring of three new police officers.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Green. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin authorizing live music and live music performances in indoor and outdoor and sidewalk cafes.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Aldman Johnson?
I just wanted to point out, this started off in committee, and it had a sunshine clause for it. I conferred with the clerk, and it seems to have gone well the last couple of years, so I didn't see any problem just codifying it and putting it on the agenda.
Do we amend it?
This is, just for clarity, this is not, this is extending the trial for one more period. Because it's a zoning amendment, it has to have a public hearing and follow the process. So it'll be codified.
Okay, we're getting there. We skipped committee. We're almost there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean Francois amending city code to establish a handicap parking spot at 26 Prince Street.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean Francois, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Aldman Jean Francois?
Yes, the committee met this evening. We specifically had discussion about this resolution. I would thank everyone in advance to please vote on this resolution. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green to approve an extension of time of six months for two resolutions dated May 4, 2021, number 9821 and 9921, for the Presidential Heights subdivision, Realty subdivision.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin?
Actually, I think Kleiner has a question.
Oh, Aldman Kleiner?
Yeah, I know we've given them some extensions before. Do we have any idea what their plans are, or if?
I know they're close to bringing it to the city for their building permits.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That's why I'll be staying in. Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?